Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Meeting of Monday, February 28, 2022. The time is 5:33 PM, and I will turn it over to Josh for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barber.
You.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lycan.
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Storset.
Here.
And Councilmember Wood.
Here.
And all seven councilmembers present in the county.
Great. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So our first order of business, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda and approve.
Okay.
Second that.
Seconded by Storset. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Consent agenda passed. Thank you so much. So, we have a presentation this evening. I wanted to welcome our guests. We have, I'm gonna see if I can find you on my screen, Justin Van Landshu from the Olympic Chapter, board member of the American Red Cross. We also have, I believe I saw Daniel Worth, the Olympic Chapter Executive Director. Hi, Daniel. And then, I believe, the other Larry Blake. Volunteer for the American Red Cross. Did I say that correctly?
You did, thank you, yes.
Oh, you're welcome. Welcome, Larry. Thank you so much for being here, the three of you. I will now read proclamation. Whereas in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. And whereas today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Gig Harbor who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And whereas the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like home fires, donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer or sickle cell disease, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering an international humanitarian aid. Now therefore, I, Tracy Markley, Mayor of the City of Gig Harbor, hereby declare the month of March 2022 as Red Cross Month in the City of Gig Harbor and dedicate the month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." I encourage all residents of Gig Harbor to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Gig Harbor to be affixed this 28th day of February 2022. Would any of you like to say a few words, Justin, Daniel, or Larry?
I'll go ahead and start and then allow Larry and Justin to say a few words. So, thank you so much, Mayor Markley, to note March is Red Cross Month. I was on a call earlier this morning with some of my colleagues, and it's very apropos today to note that one of Clara Barton's first missions or forays as she was founding the American Red Cross was to identify missing soldiers from the Civil War. And she received thousands of requests to do this, and this is, you know, late 1800, you know, way before the time of social media and other means to contact the general public. And she really helped to mobilize volunteers in identifying these missing soldiers throughout the country from the Civil War. And she was able to identify 22,000 of them just using the modes of the day. And, you know, as we're faced with another crisis throughout the world, I think it's something very appropriate to mention. And then I'll just express my eternal gratitude to you and your support as a government agency and elected officials. We are just so grateful that you would, that you would do this for us and and help put our mission and our name at the forefront at Red Cross Month. So, Justin, as one of our board members and community volunteer leaders, and Larry Blych, you know, I definitely would love to hear from either, both of you, if you have a few words to say.
Larry, if you're willing to. I live across the bridge, but Larry lives in your community. Larry, do you mind saying something? Then I'll wrap us up. You're on mute.
Larry owes a dollar in the kitty if he's talking in the mute.
All right, well.
I like that rule.
I like that.
That rule. He was on off mute.
Is that better? I'm glad we're behind scenes here, and obviously have a face for radio, so I didn't put my face up there. Anyway, I really want to reinforce what Dan said, how much we appreciate this mayor putting proclamation out like this to the community makes us feel very proud. I'm a very proud citizen, obviously, of Gig Harbor, and to be able to put our message out in such a way that means, it just means a great deal to all of us. The Red Cross mission is an extraordinary mission. I've been with them for several years now. I'm very proud of what I do, but we need to get the word out more to everybody when it comes to not only disaster preparedness, but right now we have a great need for blood donations. So, if any way we can get that word out to the community helps us tremendously. So, thank you for all you do on this city council, and thank you, Mayor, and wish you all the very best in your new term here.
Thank you.
So, I'll hand it over to Justin now.
Very well said, Larry. Again, Mayor, council members, fellow staff, really appreciate this opportunity. There's more the Red Cross can do with you as well. Happy to follow up with someone, but whether that's bringing information into the schools, having additional training for prevention and, you know, alleviating suffering, we can help in that regard, too. There's a sound alarm campaign. We can go through with smoke detectors. There's, I've never worked in an organization that has this much to offer. And so, if there's anything we can do to assist your city, just ask. And I have to point out that Dan is the recent recipient of the Spirit of the West Award. So, the entire western half of the United States, Red Cross identified him as exemplifying what it means to be a Red Cross supporter. So, yeah.
Congratulations.
We're very fortunate to have Dan here, and I spend a lot of time in your community, and anything we can do to bring value to you, let us know. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here. And I see there's some council members that would like to comment. Councilmember Denson.
Trying to unmute myself before I open my mouth. First, I just want to recognize Larry as one of our volunteer cops. So, thank you, Larry. I see him out at the concerts, hopefully again this year. So, thanks for all your service to the community. And then I wanted to ask the gentleman from Red Cross, first, if there still is a deficiency that we've been hearing about for months and months, and second, do you have any upcoming blood drives in our community that we can help promote?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Justin, I don't know if you can do a quick search to see when the next blood drive is. Yes, there most certainly is a critical blood shortage right now. We, and not just with the Red Cross, but amongst, you know, the several blood banks that we have across the country. We like to have a five-day supply of blood on hand, and with some of our types, we have less than a full-day supply of blood available to supply. So, we, there is definitely a critical shortage. The best way for people to donate is to go to redcrossblood.org, type in the zip code, you can set your search parameters, you know, up to 50 miles from your house, and you could look at the upcoming blood drives in the area. And Justin, maybe you see something that we have.
Just quickly, yeah, just quickly right now, I don't know if Gig Harbor actually has any Red Cross blood drives coming up, but they are looking for an additional quarterly one in that area. So, we'd be happy to help set that up. There is, there are a lot in Tacoma that are coming up, but I'll send Josh Stecker some information. There's an app you can download. I don't even know if you can see that. You can't. But there's also online as well. But if there's someone besides Josh I should reach out to, we can definitely help get a blood drive.
Josh, Josh is the perfect person for you to send information.
Yep. Great. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate you sending that information. Yes, Councilmember Lycan.
Hi, I just want to thank all of you for presenting tonight, and I want to thank you, Mayor Markley, for this proclamation. As a nurse practitioner myself, I work in hospitals. I order blood, I give blood, and I see this every day, and I'm glad that the city is promoting your cause. And if there is any way we can help, please reach out. Thanks.
Thank you. I thought it sounded like a hand up, but maybe it went, maybe it went down. Okay. Well, I just want to thank you all again for being here, and it is our pleasure to support the Red Cross. And I have had some people asking if you are involved in anything with Ukraine, being able to donate and provide assistance to Ukraine. Is that something that you all are doing? Is there a website people can go to if they would like to donate to the refugees or anyone over there?
Yeah, and I mean, as we all know, this has been a very quickly and fast-evolving situation. I mean, it's just been six days since this attack was initiated. We are accepting donations for the Ukraine response, and we will collect those and pass those to the appropriate responding agencies within the Red Cross. So, yeah, we can collect that. We would also encourage, you know, if donors would like to support one of the specific Red Cross societies, they could do that as well, or the ICRC or IFRC. It gets a little confusing for some. So, to keep it simple, you know, donating to the American Red Cross, we can collect that, those donations, and then supply additional financial assistance to our partner societies that are responding to the disaster in, or to the war, the crisis in Ukraine.
Great. Thank you so much. Well, enjoy your evening, and thank you again for being with us. It is our pleasure to support you. Thank you. Hi, Larry, I see you now. Have a good night.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
And so, for the mayor's report, I just wanted to say thank you to those who have already been patient with our first day of construction on the Harborview Stints and Roundabout Project. I know that there's a lot of angst in the community and also a lot of support to just see this, get, you know, get us through this and support our downtown businesses that are affected by this project. And so, just thank you in advance to our city, to our citizens and our staff who is working so hard to make sure that this goes as smoothly as possible. And thank you to our businesses and to our residents for being so understanding and patient. We're trying to do everything we can to make this as easy as we can. So, thank you so much for all of your support and patience, and please let us know if there are any immediate concerns. Reach out to Director Jeff Langhelm or George Flanagan at the city, and we can assist you. I also wanted to mention that we, some news releases have gone out, and then our, we've noticed the public today that our city administrator reception is coming up this Thursday evening at 5:30 in council chambers. This will be for our final two candidates for city administrator, and then we have final interviews happening all day on Friday. So, I'm looking forward to making an announcement soon after on that. So, with that, city administrator, interim city administrator Tony Pieseky, do you have a report this evening?
I was gonna comment on the city administrator process as well, so you stole my thunder.
Ah, sorry.
That's all right.
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, nothing else.
Okay, all right. So, now I would like to open up public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? And I will ask City Clerk Stecker to remind you of how to unmute yourself. I believe it's star six or star nine.
Star nine to raise your hand, and star six to unmute yourself. We have no written comments submitted this evening. We do have one hand raised. It's phone caller, phone number ending in eight, seven, four.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. Caller eight, seven, four.
Good evening, Mayor Markley and city council members. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can.
Hey, like I said, I wanted to say good evening, and also, this is Thomas Wick over on Hunt Street. And I sent an email over to you not too long ago to the mayor, council, Mr. Stecker, Mr. Pieseky. So, anyway, this is regarding that public records request that is dated September 25, 2020, and I continue to wait patiently for that request for public records to be completed. I put a $2,000 check in the city's Dropbox this evening. And Mayor Markley, I actually made the check payable to you and the City of Gig Harbor in hopes that it will not be just returned, and I won't be told that the request for public records has been abandoned, because I'm the only one that can abandon it, and I didn't. So, anyway, that's what I'm calling to talk about. I need to address this matter with the council because I'm not getting any feedback other than you're not getting those records. And as I said at the last city council meeting, the city passed ordinance 1465, I believe. And based on that ordinance, there's no way, reasonable expectation I would receive that, those records if I resubmitted that request for public records. So, and that request was, of course, submitted well before ordinance 1465 was approved by the council. So, I was hoping that the council and yourself, Mayor Markley, could get together and have a discussion and get some finality on that specific issue for me. I would very much appreciate that. That's all I have to say. And also, thank you for acknowledging the Red Cross. I don't think a lot of the people in the community that go above and beyond for others are recognized. And I just think it's, anyway, I just think it's really kind of the council and yourself to do so. So, thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on an agenda item that is, or on a non-agenda item?
Don't see any more hands raised.
Okay, all right. I will close the public comment on non-agenda items. Our first order of old business is a second reading and adoption of ordinance 1482 regarding storm code revisions, and this report will come from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langhelm.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Before you knight is the second reading of the ordinance, as the mayor mentioned, where we're recommending adoption of proposed ordinance 1482. This proposed ordinance is intended to update the city's stormwater billing and collection code due to updated regulations and to change various classes of property owners so that they are charged in what the city feels is a more fair manner. The first reading of the ordinance was presented to city council at the February 14 council meeting. There were no revisions requested by council at that time. However, after the February 14 meeting, staff did realize that the ordinances effective date section, section four, needed to be clarified so that it identified that only the properties receiving an increase of more than 10 EBUs due to the adoption of the ordinance would have the two-tier implementation of the new stormwater monthly rates across two years. And so, I'm gonna bring up that section just so we can all look at it real quick, but that's the only change from the previous version of the ordinance. So, the underlying section does show what the changes were. So, it was just, again, clarifying that if there's an increase of 10 EBUs or less compared to the 2021 calculation, 100% charge of the stormwater monthly rate as of July 1st. All other properties that have an increase of 10 EBUs compared to 2021 shall be charged 50% as of July 1st, 2022, and then charge 100% as of July 1st, 2023. So, that was the change that was made. Any questions on that? That's the end of my presentation right for tonight.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council? Clarifying questions for Director Langhelm. Yes, Councilmember Storset.
Yes, thanks, Jeff. Does this, you know, we talked about this balancing out pretty well from what our expenses are to what would be coming in to pay for it. Does this make much of a difference in that 50% reduction for those larger users?
No, actually, and this is where the staff looked at it. The numbers that we were calculating it off of were based off of the version of the ordinance you see tonight, not off the previous version. So, we were trying to make sure we were consistent.
Okay, nice catch. Good catch. Thanks.
Any other clarifying questions? Okay, seeing none. I will open it up for public comment. City Clerk Stecker, were there any written public comments submitted?
No written comments for this item.
Okay. Anyone from the audience wish to speak? I see one hand.
Yeah, caller ending in eight, seven, four.
Okay, go ahead when you're ready, eight, seven, four.
Mayor Markley, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, I'm a little confused about this. Maybe you could, maybe that Mr. Director Langhelm is probably the guy that shed some clarity on this. So, as you know, our properties are were you gonna say something? I don't want to be rude and interrupt you.
I was just gonna ask you to state your name. One more time for the record, please.
No, no, fair enough. Thomas Wick, Hunt Street, North West. No, thank you for, I apologize for not sharing that. So, I'm a little confused because we now have a river that flows across my neighbor's property, our property, down my driveway. In fact, I was gonna go fly fishing earlier this afternoon on my driveway because of runoff that's coming out of the City of Gig Harbor's stormwater system. So, and Mr. Pieseky can verify this, but when I, he sent me an email saying that the city turned operational control and responsibility for the stormwater that comes out of the City of Gig Harbor's stormwater system to uphill homeowners' associations. So, there lies the confusion, because if a homeowner association has operational control over the city's infrastructure, then why is the City of Gig Harbor capitalizing off of stormwater fees? That's the confusion. And like I said, please, you can, Mr. Pieseky's present there this evening, but maybe he could chime in. But he told us that our concernings were to be addressed to homeowners' associations uphill to address what's coming out of the City of Gig Harbor's infrastructure, their stormwater infrastructure. So, that was my confusion, and I was hoping that the council or Director Langhelm or Mr. Pieseky could maybe give some clarity on that issue. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We don't do question and answer during public comment period, but you can send an email to Mr. Pieseky, and we will respond to your questions. Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to speak on this agenda item? I don't see any other hands. Council deliberation and action. Any comments from council? Okay, not seeing any. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
I move to approve the ordinance.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1482. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Okay, motion passes seven, zero. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is under new business, and it is a public hearing on the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket. And this report comes to us from our principal planner, Carl DeCemus.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members of the public. Tonight, I have the pleasure of presenting council with the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket. The docket this year contains four applications. All of the applications are non-private applications, meaning they were submitted by a public agency or quasi-public agency. In this case, all of the applications were submitted by the City of Gig Harbor. By law, a public hearing is to be conducted before the city council, who shall consider all docketed amendments. Consistent with the Growth Management Act, the city may only amend the comprehensive plan once per year with a few exceptions. In accordance with Gig Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 1909, staff has assigned all amendment applications with file numbers, reviewed them for completeness, consistent with the relative criteria, and placed them on the 2022 docket. Further, staff has provided timely notice of this public hearing by publication in the News Tribune and posting it to our website. Since publication, staff received two written public comments that have been added to the record for your consideration. Gig Harbor Municipal Code, Section 1909.130, sets forth the consideration criteria that the council is to apply to each application in its determination as to whether or not to process them this year. Those criteria have been provided to you and the body of the agenda bill for tonight's hearing. Additionally, an overview of each amendment and some background has been provided to aid in your decision. Here is a brief description of each amendment. Application PL Comp 22-0001. The city's Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan has been updated. Because this plan is adopted by reference within the city's comprehensive plan, it is necessary to update the relative elements of the comprehensive plan to maintain consistency between the two documents. Application PL Comp 22-0002. The city's Public Works Department maintains several capital facilities plans that are incorporated by reference within the relative elements of the city's comprehensive plan. The plans sometimes require updates, but certain updates trigger a comprehensive plan amendment. While others might not, this amendment would provide the clarity needed for staff and the city to ensure we are processing amendments consistently and legally. App Number PL-Comp-22-003. The city's comprehensive plan currently does not directly address climate change nor sustainability in any substantive way. This amendment would work that language into the comprehensive plan at a minimum, replacing what was removed during a 2018 update, but also looking for other opportunities. And here, staff would like to note that the Department of Commerce has begun a multi-year project to develop guidance for counties and cities to address climate change within their comprehensive plans. City staff is attending these working group sessions. The goal is to produce a model element or elements by June 2023 ahead of our June 2024 comprehensive plan update. Staff is also recommending consideration of a commission made up of elected leaders, commissioners, and community members to help support this work. of a commission made up of elected leaders, commissioners, and community members to help support this work in response to council's goals set forth at the council retreat. And finally, application number PL Comp 22-0004. The Department of Ecology is requiring that all jurisdictions permitted under the Western Washington Phase Two Municipal Stormwater Permit develop a Stormwater Management Action Plan, or SMAP. The city's SMAP will be included as an addendum to the city's stormwater comprehensive plan and therefore requires this comprehensive plan amendment as part of this docket. With that, staff recommends council open the public hearing, consider the applications, and consider the suggested motion provided in tonight's agenda bill. Mayor, this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Carl. Are there any clarifying questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Denson.
I just, just one quick question. Does this require two readings? Are we being asked to vote on this tonight, Carl?
It does not require two readings, no. You may decide to process each amendment individually. Any amendments that you determine to not process would be brought back to you at the next council meeting with a resolution. And then we would make, we would be required to make findings as to why that application would not be processed.
Okay, great. Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, we will open the public hearing. Josh, were there any written comments not related to the hearing that were submitted for this agenda item?
There are no written comments. Public hearing record is added to the record online and part of the official hearing records, so those are available in the council packet. No comments submitted.
Okay. All right, so then we will open it up to the public. I see one hand raised. I believe it is Mr. Wick, but if you could also state your name again for the record, please?
Yes, ma'am. It's Thomas Wick, Hunt Street. And thank you again for reminding me, Mayor Barkley. I forget sometimes. So, again, a little area of confusion that I'm asking the council and you, Mayor Barkley, when you guys decide what you're going to do with this, there's something, there's a big crack in this process. And I believe there's an inter-local government agreement with Pierce County to where if there's going to be development within the City of Big Harbor city limits and it abuts lands that are in the urban growth boundary, then Pierce County is responsible for the stormwater approval, the drainage approval for that permit. So here's the Grand Canyon issue, is that you take like my neighbor's parcel to the east of me. These rural Pierce County. And across the street is City of Big Harbor, so you don't have an urban growth boundary. So that's the problem. So the City of Gig Harbor says, hey, we're not looking at urban, we're not required based on this agreement that we have, and I saw it posted on Gig Harbor's website. We're not obligated to involve Pierce County. And Pierce County is not obligated to even consider any of the issues, even if, I mean, they wouldn't even know about it, but so the concern is, is courses for the citizens that are residing there. Because you don't get Pierce County consideration or review, and you don't get City of Gig Harbor consideration or review. And you slide into this dark chasm where everybody looks at each other and there's no there's no accountability and there's no oversight. And it creates a lot of distress for the affected property owners. So I would ask that the council and you yourself, Mayor Barkley, look at that issue. And I did request, make this request during the prior administration. I asked them to address this very specific issue. And if it was addressed, and I'm just not aware where, where it was addressed, please forgive me, but I never saw anything that typically addressed this issue, so it doesn't happen to others. So I would ask the council again to please consider this. Thank you again for allowing me to speak on this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this agenda item? Not seeing any hands. Okay. I will close the public hearing and open it up for council deliberation and action. And yes, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. So I'm very supportive of these amendments going forward and to that cause. I move that the four proposed comprehensive plan amendments as presented on the 2022 docket be processed during the current annual amendment process consistent with the procedures provided in Gig Harbor Municipal Code Chapter 19 dot oh nine.
Is there a second? Oh, I saw a hand. Can you unmute Mary?
A second.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other council deliberation? Okay, seeing no hands, we have a motion to move the four proposed comprehensive plan amendments as presented on the 22, 2022 docket to be processed during the current annual amendment process consistent with the procedures provided in Gig Harbor Municipal Code Chapter 19 dot oh nine. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Our second item of new business is Resolution 1234, adopting the 2022 Parks Recreation and Open Space Prose Plan. And this report is from our Parks Manager, Matthew Kio.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Evening.
Glad to be with you. Glad to be able to report that the citizens of Gig Harbor and the Parks Commission and the council by its leadership have invested in its parks and they're proud of their park system. Your council back in July of 2021 authorized staff and a consultant contract to look to the prose plan, not a required document, but an intentional design of a city to go ahead and look at its park and recreation open space plan and to make it current and updated. There is pressure to do so in order to qualify for state grants, but the investment of time particularly by the Parks Commissioners was sincere to making sure that the park system was well inventoried. The goals and policies of the past were reviewed and mostly retained. And that their direction for the next six years was strategic in terms of looking at a park system, not just looking at a what might a small project be, which is important and categorized, but really trying to set some, some goals and visions for when we have hard decisions ahead of us. So you have a prose plan, a Parks Recreation Open Space Plan before you that has been through a public process. I was pleased to have time with the whole council at its study session. Of course, I'm here to answer any questions, but just to make clear for the record, it's a six-year guiding document. It's being proposed to you to be adopted by resolution, not ordinance. Again, this is policy and funding guidance. It includes an executive summary for the public because we do hope the messaging of the importance of our parks and their history and the projects themselves are well documented. The executive summary is a way to introduce the larger document. It also includes a capital improvement program. This is an element not required, but it's a good strategy for us to look up, look ahead. And so we put park projects that have been brought to our attention and certainly through this process to the forefront and said, will we be able to schedule these over the next six years? And so it's a goal to do so. The projects that have been brought to our attention are listed. There is funding possibilities inherent in the document, mostly if you were to study the capital improvement program. You would see that there are some bump years, some years when there's a lot of money potentially to come into a park system. Those happen to be grant cycle years. So I want you, council, and the public to realize that we have an ambitious prose plan, but it's not a commitment ahead of council of any financial obligations. It is ambitious in that it totals over $40 million over the next six years. But that's because it's visionary and it's talking about a complete system. I'd be happy to answer more questions. I'm proud to be with you in some of the strategic approaches that are inherent in this this version, the six-year plan, to be ideally adopted by resolution tonight.
Thank you, Matthew. Yes, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, I want to give you guys kudos and the Parks Commission and your staff for helping out getting this plan done. It was an astounding amount of work. I also appreciate integrating climate change and urban forest management plan in the plan. I think we even stepped out ahead of our resolutions tonight. So thank you very much. I think this is an excellent roadmap for the next six years for the City of Gig Harbor. And I appreciate all the work that you did on it.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I will open up the public comment. Josh, were there any public comments, written comments submitted today?
No written comments for this item this evening.
Okay. All right, I will open it up for the public to speak. Okay, yes, go ahead. Caller eight, seven, four. And reminder to state your name for the record, please.
Thank you again, Mayor Barkley, for reminding me. So Thomas Wick, Hunt Street. Hey, something, um, this, or Councilman Wook should be able to really assist with this. She's the environmental champion. Has the city given any consideration to combining their plans for parks with regional stormwater facilities? Where maybe they could address property rights and drainage deficits and needs for parks all in one tail swoop. I was wondering if that's something that the council would be interested in discussing maybe before they approve this resolution. And again, I singled out Ms. Wook because I know she's the environmental champion. So I'm hoping that she would support me in that endeavor. Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Appreciate it. Bye.
Thank you. Uh, yes. Ben Coronado.
Hey. Am I talking, okay. Hey. We can hear you. Hey, Ben Coronado, 8019, Mid Lane, Gig Harbor. Yeah, I just wanted to speak in favor of this resolution you're looking at tonight as the Parks Commission Chair, and I wanted to go ahead and thank everybody involved in helping develop this document. And anybody, anybody who came before too. I know Robin was instrumental in the previous prose plan and you know, we really tried to take considerations from previous prose plans to make sure those types of things were adopted into this current one. So I wanted to know that, you know, some of those visions that you all had, you know, came through in this one as well, and I hope you feel the same way. And just everybody involved, really, I think is going to be a great document to help and drive, you know, the parks for the next six years for the city. And I look forward to, you know, hopefully being a part of that. And Matthew, I'm sure is going to do a great job. He's an excellent hire for the city, I think. And you know, he's, he's just really crushing it. And so thank you for everybody who's been a part in, you know, Mary and Roger were, you know, so great to work with on this. And so, yeah, here you go. And I, I hope you find it kindly and, and it is passed and adopted tonight and adopted into our comprehensive plan. I know lots of hours and conversations were had about this, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And we couldn't agree more about our Parks Director. Um, any other, any, anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Okay, I don't see any hands. I will close the public comment. Council deliberation and action. Yes, Mary Barber, Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Like other speakers, I offer my thanks to the members of the Parks Commission and the public who helped create this plan. It was a pleasure to work on it and a tremendous project. And I believe as others have said, that it will guide us well into the future. So it is with great pleasure that I move to approve Resolution 1234.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodenberg. Any other council comments? Yes, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. This is a wonderful document. It's important for our community. So to everyone who worked on this, thank you. I know it took a lot of work. So this was a great document. It is a great document. It's a living document and it will set us and put us in good stead for a long time. I'm going to offer an amendment this evening. There is another Parks Group on the peninsula. In six years' time, we do not know what types of parks or park equipment they could be installing. So I had a chat with Parks Manager Matt Keough. And my concern is if something equipment is identified in the prose plan that is a six-year project, will it still be needed in six years and not be a duplicate of another Parks Group? So we should not have to bind ourselves to a duplicate item unless we want to have a duplicate item. After chatting with Mr. Keough and being comfortable that this will not delay the submittal of the prose plan, this wording should make sure we are not financially bound to duplicate any other Parks Group equipment or project unless we choose to do that. The specific wording that I'm putting forth this evening was suggested by Parks Manager Mr. Keough. And this has to do with Chapter Five, page 55 of the plan or page 63 of 195 pages in your packet. And after the last sentence on that page, a new sentence would be inserted. At time of authorizations of project service needs, planning assumptions will be reevaluated. That's the end of the sentence. And, and that's something that I appreciate them, Parks Manager Mr. Keough, helping me with this wording and suggesting that this would be appropriate place to put it. So that's my amendment.
I'll second Councilwoman Wook's amendment.
Thank you. Um, City Clerk Sticker, do you need that to be reread or can, did you capture that?
I will get that from Councilmember Wook for the official record.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for the amendment. Yes, Councilmember Barber.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the pages again. Councilmember Wook, could you give, give those again, please?
Sure. It's on page 55 of the plan itself. Chapter Five, page 55. Or page 63 of 195 of all the pages that are in the packet. So it depends on what you're looking at. If you're looking at the prose plan itself, page 55.
Okay, and then where was it on that page? I'm on that page now.
It would be inserted after the last sentence on that page. There it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm happy to read it again if that helps clarify anything.
Okay, no, that helped. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would any other council members like Councilmember Wook to reread her amendment? Or do you have that? Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the original motion to approve Resolution 1234. And I believe, City Clerk Sticker, do we need a vote on the original motion first or the amendment first?
The amendment.
Vote on the amendment first.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for Councilmember Wook's amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, the amendment passes seven to zero. Any other council comments or deliberation before we vote on the, the main motion? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1234. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? Okay, the ayes have it, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can just make one quick comment.
Sure.
Several people have already said it, but I really, really do want to say thank you to Matthew for his great work coming in here.
Several people have already said it, but I really, really do want to say thank you to Matthew for his great work coming in here.
Yes.
I mean, he's only been with us for a couple of months and to jump in and to get this thing pulled together in a really good shape is fantastic. So Matthew, thank you very much. Job well done.
Yes. Thank you so much, Matthew. We appreciate you more than I think you might ever know. All right. Moving on to council reports and comments, we have a couple that are listed here. The first one is a proposed change to the Gig Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter two point zero four point zero three zero, related to council meeting agendas, and this is Councilmember Woo.
Thank you. So this week, last week, our council agenda was published on Tuesday afternoon. It has been published on Tuesday for about six years. It just had not been codified. Staff has been working with Tuesday published date. If items were not ready for Tuesday, then there have been placeholders until the items were ready. If something needed more work, we have seen agenda items be modified before the council meeting. Keeping the agenda items published on Tuesday would be nothing new for the staff and not new for the citizens. It would simply be putting this into code. I am reminded of our retreat and the important stress to encourage engagement with our citizens. We need to support those engagement words with actions. We're not doing anything new with Tuesday's agendas, but we would be taking away a day of engagement and information and questionability from our citizens if we don't keep doing Tuesday, and it does need to be codified. So it's, it's not always easy to get hold of our staff on Friday because it is, of course, the last day of the week. So publishing on Tuesday is not new. Our staff has been doing this. We've been doing this for about six years. If the agenda item is not ready, we have seen a placeholder in its place until the item is ready. If something needs to be amended, it can be amended. This Tuesday publication is another active demonstration of the council's intent to engage with citizens. Engagement is a two-way street. Let's not limit the public's right to be informed and ask questions. So I believe that in order to get this codified, I need to make a motion. And I, I moved to direct the mayor, to direct staff to come back with a code amendment for six calendar days instead of five calendar days, and that is in chapter two point oh four point oh three oh.
Thank you. Is there a second or comments from council?
I have a, a, a comment.
Yes, Councilmember.
I, I think my, my question would be to, uh, City Clerk Stecker, is this something that's easy to do or is it going to be easier to do after you get your, your assistant or whatever that position is called? Are you, can you get this done now or is this, do we need to wait?
Are, are you referring to just getting, making sure the packets are out on Tuesdays?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, it's definitely easier with the assistant city clerk to do that. It's the, getting the packets out on Wednesdays is just a matter of making sure that all the pieces have arrived in time. And that really just depends on all staff, not just the clerk's department.
So my reason for asking is I'm in favor of Councilmember Woo's, uh, motion. But I'm, I'm not sure where we are in the process of getting the assistant city clerk. And I would hate to overburden the city clerk right now. So.
So this, apologies, but just to answer that, we are in the process. We've done the first initial wave of interviews for the assistant city clerk position. But I would definitely caution council not to make any code changes based on staffing because there's no guarantee that we will always have two clerks. In fact, at some point, we will be back down to one. And if this is a code change, that's a permanent thing that's going to affect that. So.
All right, I see there's a lot of hands up, so I'll reserve any more.
Your Honor, I would suggest that prior to any additional discussion about what Councilmember Woo is proposing, that we get a second to her motion in order to put it on the table.
Yes. Is there a second?
I'll second it to put it on the table.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Thank you. And I believe the next hand was Councilmember Starset.
Yes, thank you. You know, just my immediate concerns that pop up with this. And Jenny, thank you for giving the, the back history on it. It sounds like this has been in practice for quite some time. What I get concerned of is, are we being sure that this is, that staff is putting their best work forward? And I understand that they can make additions to it later. But if this is adding any additional stress on the team, even to meet that deadline, because everyone wants to meet the deadline. They don't want to be late with something. And so if we're not getting, you know, the best quality work and the best message we can to give back to our citizens, I don't see the rush in one day. So, it's my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, kind of a question to Josh, if this gets codified, are there any things that change though? Right now, it's not codified, so everybody does their best job getting stuff out on Tuesday. If things can't get out on Tuesday and it's now codified, are there ramifications as a result of codifying a day in a week that this has to be done?
So if this is codified, if it becomes part of the municipal code and for some reason we're not able to get a packet out on Tuesday, then we would have to cancel the council meeting and create a special meeting or find a new date to do the meeting. I, that situation, I suppose, could come up if the city clerk's not available on a Tuesday to put the packet out and there's no backup to do it or any kind of computer issue situation that came up. So if it was codified, then we would be bound to the code. And if we can't meet the deadline on the code, then we can't hold the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. Um, I guess the answer to the last question addressed some of my concerns, but I'm also wondering, City Clerk Stecker, could you address what the best practices are in this area in other municipalities? I'm assuming you're, you have a network of city clerks and you guys all chat. So I'm wondering what the best practices that you've seen.
We, we do, yes. And this question comes up quite frequently and we just had a round of discussion about this not too long ago. The industry standard is four days and some cities do five days. So for a Monday meeting, typically the packet deadline is Thursday. Some cities do Wednesday. Most do not have a codify deadline just because of the reasons we talked about, but that's in their council guidelines is that they strive to have it out on four days before. They strive to have it out five days before.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, thank, yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I think some of my concerns were also answered by City Clerk Stecker in response to Councilmember Barber and Councilmember Henderson's question about codifying. I, I have a question for City Clerk Stecker. I see we have the council guidelines update in the future planning agenda in May. And I see that this is currently part of those council guidelines that we're going to be updating overall. If we do not vote this into code, would, we would potentially address at that meeting when we look at all of those things together?
Yeah, this is something that you could include in council guidelines as well. I think there's an allusion to it in the current version of council guidelines. I think it's just a restatement of what's currently in the code.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, the current code does not have a five-day requirement. The only reference to the packet deadlines is that there's a four-day requirement for study session packets. And there is an allowance that we allow anyone from the public to request something to be added to the agenda five days before, which kind of just assumes that we wouldn't have to pack it out more than five days before.
Okay, great.
But council rules can address any of that. You can make, you can make these kind of changes in the rules. It's a little less binding. The staff would still be required, if you had a Tuesday deadline in your rules, we would still be required to do that. And you probably would run into the same situation where we have to cancel meetings if we can't meet that just because staff can't go against the council guidelines the way that council can.
Okay, great. And one, just one other point is that the planning agenda is now included in the packet and it goes several months out, correct, for the public to see so they can see what is coming up in both the consent and the business items?
Yeah, the agenda planning schedule, we've been including that. It goes typically the next two council meetings or so. It has the, the full agenda items on there and then other items as we are aware that they're coming up will be added to it as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, in order of hands, actually, let's see, let's go back to Councilmember Woo.
Oh, okay. So, uh, so I would just remind everyone that the list of meetings that's in the agenda does not have documents as the documents are published with the agenda the day, the week before. But I'm really interested actually in, in council guidelines and rules and maybe putting this in there because I don't think anybody wants to not have a meeting. So it's not in the code now for five calendar days?
It is not, no. The only reference to calendar days for the packet is just that we need to allow anyone from the public to request an item to be put on the agenda up to five days before. And that's at the discretion of the mayor. The public can't just add items, but they can request the mayor to add items up to five days before the meeting.
Right, right, right. Um, okay. So, okay, thank you. I would at least, hopefully, if this doesn't pass as a code, hopefully it can come back and we can discuss this more in council rules and guidelines.
I guess Councilmember Starset.
Yes, thank you. Another concern that I just had on, you know, I mentioned kind of, is this a burden to, you know, rush this out, wanting to have quality work? We have, we often have Mondays that are holidays as well, you know, for the staff. And I would hate to see them working through the weekend so they can meet a Tuesday deadline for us. Also hearing that, you know, best practice in, in neighboring cities is four and five days. I'd be curious what council has to say about a, a short, a short amount of days, like four days, and how much does that impact them? So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, I'd like to withdraw my second. I think we decided that we would probably discuss this at the May meeting. And instead of having it voted on and fail, I would like to withdraw my second.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I'd be happy to withdraw the motion and, and put it on agenda, I guess, if we can, for council rules and guidelines when we and have a discussion about this at that time. Is that possible?
Yes, I believe so. City Clerk Stecker, how would she go about doing that?
We've tempered or just conditionally placed the council rules and guidelines on the agenda for, I believe, sometime in May. I would anticipate that's probably going to take a couple of council study sessions to go through. We've put it off a little bit longer into the year just so that the new council members can kind of get familiar with how the council guidelines function. I think council in May or June will also be reconsidering whether they want to start up the council committees again. And that decision will impact how we revise council guidelines. So there's going to be a number of things, I think, that we'll tackle at that time. And it probably will take more than one or two or maybe three study sessions to get through what council wants to see in there.
And Josh is absolutely right. When we put the generic item, council guidelines on an agenda for discussion, it's basically wide open for you to talk about whatever you'd like to do with those guidelines, including adding things to it, taking things away, whatever it is, they're your guidelines.
So I'm happy to withdraw my motion and, and, and when it comes time for council rules and guidelines to, I will, I will be putting it in there. I'm not interested in having council meetings not be able to happen because of not able to meet a deadline of, of a Tuesday. So I'm, I'm happy to withdraw that motion there.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, thank you, council. Um, the second item is a proposed change to council procedures related to public comment. Also, Councilmember Woo, would you like to do the same thing?
Actually, you know, I'm really fine with putting this on council rules and guidelines. I don't think it has to be done now. But I just want to remind everybody that we vote, when we all ran for election, you know, we, we had, we, we all said, I for sure said, that I want to have better engagement with our citizens. And engagement indeed is a two-way street. And just because, and during this pandemic and any time that the council is not able to meet with the public in, in council meetings, I very much want to see and hear what they have to say. If they, if they want it read into the records, and of course, it would have to be limited to three minutes. So I'm, I'm probably not going to bring this up tonight because I don't think it has to be amended now. But I do want to see it and I will be bringing it forward when we talk about council rules and guidelines in May. I just think that ignoring the voice of our public and not listening to it is not really reaching out to the public to engage them. Engagement is indeed a two-way street. So, so I, I'm, I won't go forward with that tonight either. I'll bring it back when we do council rules and guidelines. I do have a report though from Pierce County Council meeting, Regional Council meeting I'd like to make, the reports. So, um, as the Gig Harbor representative, I attended the Pierce County Regional Council General Assembly on February seventeenth. And basically that meeting was to set the work plan for twenty twenty-two. It's going to be a busy year. We'll be looking at countywide planning policies, countywide comp plan, update, the schedule, the Pierce County Emergency Management Review for just a few items. So as the year goes on and I continue to meet with Pierce County Regional Council and work with them, I'll be reporting on these items during the year. So, uh, thank you for this evening. Sorry, I took up some time with those other items, but I'm really happy to have them included in a, or at least discussed when we do council rules and guidelines. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Woo. Any other council reports or comments? Yes, Councilmember Lichten.
Hi, yes, thank you, Mayor Markley. I just want to add on to Councilmember Woo's comment about public engagement, getting out and canvassing thousands of homes here in Gig Harbor this last year. Really was wonderful to connect with our citizens. And, um, I just wanted to announce the tentative plans that both Mayor Markley and Laura Pettit have supported and you'll start to see coming out that the council is tentatively going to have a listening booth at the farmer's markets and at the summer concert series where there will be one or two council members as well as some city staff, potentially even some of our commissioners to be present and engage with our public. This was a simple thing and I just want to thank both Mayor Markley and Laura Pettit for their support and their work on this. So hopefully that will help. So.
Thank you. We're sure looking forward to seeing our citizens this summer, the spring and summer. I know it's, it's been, it's been a long time coming. So thank you for that wonderful idea and for all of our staff that are working to put that together. I think it's going to be great. All right, any other comments from council? Okay, seeing none. So as we mentioned, our announcement of upcoming meetings, we have our agenda planning schedule document that is attached to the agenda in the packet and you can find that online. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.